Started at seven o'clock, we're gonna start with the pledge allegiance, the flag is. Alleged to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder that we are recording tonight, important here, it's here if anybody else is recording, we just need to know. I'm not sure if people in the back, if you're gonna be able to hear us okay, so if you have to move up, feel free to move up.
I can hear you, Sharon.
Well, that's great, Peter. Second row, see?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna start with F Y twenty-four budget.
Thank you, ma'am, chair, and to the rest of the committee, and to the audience. We have no change of information except for the following: today we received another resignation. We expect to receive another part-time resignation tomorrow. And. I'll start again, is that loud? My teacher voice, my coaching voice. Am I getting yelled at home? We have no new information as to retention of budgets except for two situations. One, I received a resignation this morning from an L G N staff member, and I am seeking or awaiting a part-time position resignation as well. This is added to the one from last week that I announced. As I said before, this is the time of year when this starts to happen, and it's not unusual for it to happen in every public school system, regardless of budget cuts, or regardless of people moving, and so on and so forth. I can also tell you that we're working on a significant case that could have a six-figure impact on our mandated budget. The Special Education Department informed me this afternoon that there's a situation taking place that could be in the vicinity of $150,000 plus. This is one of those situations of a student going out of district and specialized. It's also a situation where we're working with the state, but that doesn't mean that the state, I can tell you the state's gonna give you zero dollars for that situation. But that's gonna have to be a discussion that Dr. O'Neil has with you, if in fact those things start to happen in the fall, is a piece of information. So right now, more of a circuit breaker, if that was to be come to fruition, the already 50% of the circuit breaker that we took out, you would be going into that, which has about $200,000 if I believe in it. So that's a concern. Again, tomorrow, we could lose a student who is out of district, and this is what's gonna have an inflow for the next eight to 12 weeks or so, dependent on what's taking place. The state budget has not yet come forward. I just saw Representative Barrows at the Kent Taylor dedication ceremony, thanking to the entire community for coming out, we had a really nice turnout. And they're still working on finalizing the state budget. I will tell you this, the maximum we're gonna get is $60 per student. The $100 that was filed by M A S S, supported by all the different associations, including the M T A, M A S C, and everything else, is not going to happen. That will be cut at the $60, of which vote the conference committee, which is a concept of, if I remember correctly, it's three reps and three senators, they've worked the budget and put it together. Right now, that's at 60. So our total Chapter 70 money increase would go from approximately $62,000 to about $124, $125,000 of available funds. We'll have to, I believe right now that the town's number was the $30, so there's a potential that there's another $30 per student out there, or another $62,000 available to the school. The numbers are gonna change on a day-to-day basis, as I've announced a number of times now. As those numbers change, the new superintendent will have the ability to sit down with her people and figure out where are the masses. Please know that right now, we have a hold on a kindergarten position. As you know, we had two in the budget, and we have some concerns, we have a hold on one. So if the numbers don't grow in kindergarten, there is a $50,000 piece of money there available, if in fact we don't have to create another K class. As an example, enrollment is starting to come in, we're pretty flat with enrollment, we're right in that 155 to 165 number. Can anticipate about 170, and then we have, where are most of those students attending? Is it the J C S side of town, or is it the L G N side of town? We'll also have students that we will lose during the summer months. So we will churn to the positive two, positive six, positive nine, because you may have 30 move-ins and 30 move-ups. So now you have a churn of zero. Our net the last few years has been four or five, not including in the fall, where we stopped to see some high school students that are attending the Aggie, Southeastern, and even private schools that come back. Really, we had five this year. So those students are not accounted for in our enrollment if they come back to us after October 1st. In other words, we don't get any money from the state on the October 1st enrollment, which becomes the Chapter 70 money, which is what leads to the money that will come into the town of Norton from the state. The other part that is going to be somewhat tricky is, as you look at the personnel changes that will happen during the year, the concern that we have, or during the summer, the concern that we have is, we try to backfill with a great candidate who's less experienced, just be willing to cost you less. That is not what's out there. What's out there is, you have a good reputation, people wanna work in Norton, and they're coming in at 90,000. They're leaving their $90,000 job, taking the pay cut, and come to work here because our pay scale is lower, so they might be leaving Brockton at 100 to come to work for us for 92, because they do have 15, 18, 20 years of experience, and they do have two master's degrees and all that stuff. We ran into this problem last year as well, coming out of COVID, with a number of people that became the best applicants, were not M1s or B1s coming out of college in most instances. In most instances, they were people that were applying from other communities, who wanted to work in Norton, in some cases lived in Norton, or lived nearby, didn't wanna have their 45-minute commute anymore, going one way, were able to have a 10-minute commute, save on the gas, because of the gas prices, these are all the things that came into fruition. That's a problem for us, because if somebody leaves as a $70,000 employee, and we can only find a $75,000 employee, we're actually in the whole five grand, that's what's gonna happen all summer. You could have the opposite, somebody leaves at 90, and you're lucky to find somebody who's on the second year at 60. Now you've saved $30,000. That is what's gonna happen through August. We anticipate statewide, a number of districts have yet to announce layoffs, a number of districts have announced significant layoffs. Brockton Public Schools has definitely gotten into the pool, because they have currently over 300 folks that are being laid off, or moved, under their rules. In other words, they bump somebody else, so they go from instructional technology to back to grade three classrooms. They go from being an interventionist, back to the fifth-grade classroom, and so on. They're gonna go through that process as well, like we are. There is a local district that typically doesn't lay off a lot of folks, that currently, according to the superintendent last week, has 25 teaching positions that are being laid off. So some of these city council budgets are already done, some of them are waiting to do a couple of things. We don't typically do this, but what usually will happen is, they'll wait until potentially have a special town meeting before the start of school to fill positions, or they'll take the chance, like we have done, i.e. last year, year before, year before, year before, year before, I've done it for nine years, and that is that we anticipate that FinCom will give us something, and we take the chance in hiring in August, and then go back and not lay off as many people per se, by doing the following: $450,000 last year for transportation, $300-something thousand the year before that to transportation. We don't have a transportation bill really until October, so the idea is that if we have an October town meeting, we take the chance that there's gonna be free cash. Lastly, the perfect picture in this, or the better picture in this, and I'll leave this statement, is the following: we know on this side of the aisle that the free cash is going to be a significant number. We know that, because we are the largest employee, employer, excuse me, and we know that for two months, we did not pay health insurance. If you all remember, those of you that are employed by the district, we went two months without paying health insurance, thereby creating about $500 to $600 per month of savings for every single one of those family plans, and less for the individual plans. That money will become part, should become part of free cash. Matter of fact, it's already been used in this fiscal year '23 to balance off the supplemental budget, if you remember, from town meeting, it was written in, right in there. That doesn't include any of the other items that go as part of free cash. Free cash is when you pay your bills by June 30th, they have to be, actually, the last payment for us, I think this year is June 13th, the bills have to be paid. In some cases, we overpay, the bill is paid, the money comes back into the general fund as free cash. Or we turn over money at the end of the year from all departments, and that becomes free cash. Okay? And then you still have settlement money out there, the opioid task force, and all of that stuff, that I'm sure at some point, the town managers, select board, and you folks will have some discussions about. $1.6 million, four layoffs, eight other positions not being filled, but not causing quote layoffs, those are either due to a resignation, retiming, or people let go, those are really the three. Leaves of absence, we had one who's not coming back, so therefore that caused a saving somewhere else. So that's the big picture of the items. The discussions on the interventionists, the academic coordinators, other curriculum positions, other stipend positions, we basically, right now, have not appointed any of those other positions, that'll be Jen's call as well, on in terms of any of the stipend positions where we put them in right away, and/or we hold until we have a better picture of what the negative impact of the budget could be going into the year. I would anticipate, if I was a betting man, that the budget for us will be better in the next 30 to 60 days, in potential going to the town meeting. Remember that the town meeting, through the Finance Committee recommendation, provided $700,000 from the stabilization account, so that we didn't lay off $700,000 more of positions, and so on and so forth, because that would have been a heavy hit. Now you're talking $2.3 million. Lastly, we try to stay away as much as possible from K to V, in terms of the cuts. Please know also that any and all of these cuts that are made to someone who's let go has nothing to do with performance. It has to do with the protocol, where people line up, and then making the awful decisions of cutting back a program, or trying to see if later on, we can save a program. The schedules for the elementary usually aren't done for a while, middle school, I know Mr. Haywood likes to get his schedules done early, I know the high school is a very significant issue, but Mr. Cersei just rubbed his head again, he does that when he goes off. High school schedule is very, it's a tug-and-pull all over, like, somebody who used to do them, it looks great on one day, and then the next day, kids' requests change, or situations happen, people leave, and it becomes a little bit daunting, is the word. So we try to get our schedules done as soon as possible, I think, Vinny, I don't wanna speak to you, but I think we're kinda behind a little bit.
Well, you need to make sure about the whole budget back.
Yep, and then, and then there's an impact of what happens with the budget. So whatever decisions the five of you and Jen make, in terms of the summertime, and what happens, and what's the priorities, until you've got two major discussions, three major discussions and priorities that are, you know, hit the room here tonight. You've got one, music with potential chorus after school, instead of just full-time school day. Band here is scheduled currently, three days, I believe it is. You've got the impact on the Haywood that, potentially, do you backfill that in some way, shape, or form, part-time teacher, we did this years ago, if you remember. And then that needs to potentially open up something here, so there's a priority, it's got a number attached to it, what is that number, how do you do it? The second one is the world language, that completely changes the schedule if that's the priority. Okay? Because that now means you've got two slots back into your schedule, into the grades. Is that the priority? And then you have, in this particular case, the one stipend area, the academic coordinators that will cut at the high school, again, the impact on that is a total stipend amount, and then, do you bring them all back, do you only bring some of them back, do you change the way that you do business? And I believe those discussions are gonna happen, I know that those discussions are gonna happen with Jen. And we did not raise fees across the board, that was intentionally done, except for preschool, which had not seen a fee in, I believe, these four years. But we did not raise fees in activities, athletics, transportation. We did put in a late bill, if you will, process for transportation of $50, I guess it would come to be the last Thursday. Those are ebb and flow items. Oh, by the way, we also moved funds into facilities by moving another custodial salary into facilities, meaning you are now at almost 100% of the champions money that comes in, being used to cover custodial salaries, a certain amount, so $135,000 is not gonna pay them off, but you've got, I believe it's 4.0, folks that are, or four positions accounted for about three and a half FTEs that are in that budget. So that budget is now tight. So one of the concerns you're gonna have is, I'll remind the committee, Finance Committee has a $150,000 account, that is for emergencies, we have not used that money in the past, we haven't seeked it, but when you're using almost 100% of your facilities account for personnel, or to keep your buildings up to date, there are gonna be $10,000, $12,000 items that eventually, you don't have the $10,000, $12,000, you're gonna have to really take a look at either you don't do it, or, you know, the old days of putting a black bag over it, or you request special funding to take place. That's how tight some of those five items are. So that's the big picture. Again, as much negative as this is, there are some positive in terms of what we see in the future. We had some very, I thought, positive comments from some folks here at the Nike, around, coming together around the so-called, whatever word I guess we're gonna use in the town of more to define, when you don't get what you need to go to the next year. So I'll leave it at that.
So I guess if anybody else in the crowd, thank you all for coming, if anybody has anything to say.
Wait, is the mic on?
Peter, is that on?
It's on.
You're loud enough, you're good.
Is it on?
No, wait, go ahead, Peter, we can hear you.
I am Peter Jacob, it's your hard-earned organ, I stand by this looking for making their decision, I know it starts, but you're doing the best you can in these trying times, and on social media, people need to stop attacking you for making the right decisions, and I'm very tired, but this social media is profoundly not effective for a lot of the school people for doing the right thing, so I stand by this, don't make a hundred percent decision, so, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Does anybody else have anything? Yes? Yeah, sorry, couldn't see you.
Like Peter said, kudos to you guys, horrible decision, but I guess my question is, the last few positions that are gonna backfill, do we know those positions?
Yeah.
And how are they gonna?
Sure.
You know what I mean, would be, knows how the budget's gonna be, are those gonna be looked at, as well as ones that were applied?
So the backfill is one grade five teacher, we can absorb that number, class sizes are maintained. We have the reading interventionist down at the J C S, that person's going back into the classroom. We have a kindergarten placeholder that we don't have any person in now. We had seven, if you remember during COVID, we increased our nursing, to have a coordinator, a floater, and five in the building. One of our nurses, Nurse Jenny, left in winter sometime, we've already replaced her with one, with the floating Katie, Nurse Katie, so we just aren't, there's no one to lay off there, we're just not, rehire. So we still have one nurse per building, and coordinator, who can help us with the backfilling and all that stuff. But if you know a nurse who wants to sell, we're happy to take that information. And then the two office positions, the central office, the financial analyst position, was going to work under Christine Hatfield, that does all the analysis stuff, which is how Christine joined us, and then the, I cut, the communications director for the high school. And then at the high school, we have MAP in English resignations that are not being backfilled at this time, and a, I believe that's the title, music at the Yell, but that's part of resolving this whole music chorus thing.
So I guess we have some questions?
Yeah, it's okay.
We are, the reading specialist is so important.
Yes.
And obviously, some of those, do we know what our kindergarten looks like in the fall? Are those gonna be higher priorities than some of the other ones?
So that'll be, so typically, the way we do, we watch kindergarten very closely during the year. I always budget, have always been lucky to budget one position. We try to, we attempted to this year, because we are seeing some things, plus we're seeing students coming in post-COVID, with some further issues that we would like to address as all of class sizes. So that, I would recommend to the incoming administration, that's a priority area. When it comes to the reading interventionist, that's different from a reading specialist, where a reading specialist has a full license in reading, and interventionist does not, okay, they know reading, but they don't necessarily hold that license. So yes, there's still, I believe it's 2.0, that are left at the J C S, and the reading interventionist goes back into the classroom. And that person's going back into the classroom, grounded on a leave of absence person not returning, so it actually didn't cause a layoff. That's one. Two, we are replacing all other positions, I'm thinking of a grade, is it a grade two retirement? We have already budgeted for a grade five, another grade five retirement in November. We've already budgeted for a person to be in for September, so that the transitions even for the children, and we've already budgeted, oh, and then we had special education inclusion, who's going out in October from the Yell, that position's gonna be backfilled for September as well, so that the transitions for students are just smoother. And in time, we have retirements that happen, that we know about now, that are gonna happen in October, November, December, or I should say, September, October, even into November, we just say, we're chancing it, we're gonna bring in someone, and make sure that it's the easiest transition, better than trying to transition a teacher to students in December, let's say. It's just smoother.
One Friday, maybe, one Monday, probably.
And, right, and the concern is, as much as you're paying quote to people at that point, right, the concern is, where are you gonna find a full-time teacher in November and December? You're not. You're not. And it's not necessarily, every once in a while, you get lucky, but hard positions to fill at that time.
I can actually add to your question, so I think there's a little bit of nuance there, that maybe we didn't address. It sounds to me like you're asking, if things go a certain way, where are our priorities right now? I think that's really what your question is.
I agree, yes, because I don't think that's accurate.
Yeah, we answer a lot of questions, but not that. So speaking strictly for myself, I would say that I think it's undetermined what the priority is. I don't want to mislead somebody and tell them that, in my opinion, I don't want to say to me and say, hey, yeah, music's my priority, or world language's my priority, or one of these backfill positions is my priority. To me, I don't know, honestly, I don't know really, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna pretend that I do. Now that makes it, Dr. O'Neil will be the person who decides what she thinks is right, and while we have some say in it, it really should be her decision ultimately, but for me personally, yeah, I'm not sure what priorities are, just.
Does anybody have anything else? Who's that T-shirt voice?
Okay. So in an effort to be hopeful, I was just wondering, has retirements and the first resignations from the J C S, we should be taking into account too, for the money?
Yeah, so what we did, Eric, is, any situation of retirement that we knew was gonna backfill, we took the person, for example, person goes out at 90,000, we budgeted 60 to replace. The principals are being told, you know, we saved, you know, X number of dollars, those savings are already accounted for in our proposed budget to get to only before layoffs. I say only from 1.6 million. The resignations, we've already informed the principals that they need to stick to a number as close as possible. Typically, budget 65,000, which puts us in that M3 to M5 category, depending on the position. The concern is always the specialty areas, chemistry, physics, mathematics, special education, specialized programs versus inclusion. Typically, world language, of course, not for us, since we just cut two people. Those are the traditional areas where we have our problem finance.
Yeah, so for retirement, do you think it's a budget, do you have?
Yeah, I have, for example, I have a senior person going out at 100,000, we budgeted 60, so we saved 40, we practically kept another teacher from a layoff, I think, because, as you know, typically, the people that are less experienced are at that master's degree, even bachelor's degree, steps one through five, which is less than, if you know, 10 to 16. And just to Mr. Grass's comment, which is a good point, that's what's gonna happen all summer, all summer. The idea of Joe Byetta resigns, we made the saving. Perfect example is my position, we put $50,000 less in my salary and everything else in transition to the new superintendent, thereby saving another position. Same thing with a retirement in Central Office that's taking place in the fall, and so on.
And just before you speak, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this before, if you could just state your name for the record.
Thank you.
My question, when you're hiring, all of my teachers here are forcing these students to, in front of these students?
Yeah, so band currently will be scheduled three days a week in this building, okay? High school has band, Yell School is what we gotta address. We need, we need 15 sections of general music to take place in order for teacher preparation. So kids go to band, teacher goes to 45-minute prep, right? That's what happens. Then we have to address the issue, and we have to address that contextally, because I have to have a person there. So we'll do that. The question then becomes, where does band take place? As you may recall, band is a full pull-out system at the middle school, which is not the best model, excuse me, at the Yell, excuse me, at the Yell. That is not a great one, because we end up moving students out of other areas. I know a local district that has moved their younger grade band, introduction band, to only before school or only after school. So it's run as an activity club, that type of stuff. Compensation takes place, so on and so forth, create late bus situations, that can happen as well. I don't know how we do it in this case, unless we tied it into our current lead work. But right now, we have to address the 15 sections. There's only one way right now, without using money, by taking the band here, making it two days a week, moving the band teacher to the Yell for those 15 sections, which would be roughly two days a week. That's how the schedule's gonna have to work. Sharing staff is very, very different when it comes to the specialty areas. Finding part-time, we've had some success with that, because we've been able to hire somebody part-time, and then move them to full-time over a couple years. We've done that at the high school. In 2013, when I got here, we had one music teacher at the high school, and we had here at the middle school, and at the elementary, we only had, I believe it was 1.7 or 1.8. So we've been trying to roll them, if you will, through these. So those are the two hard issues that have to be addressed, band at the Yell, and then how much time is band here in this school? Yes.
At or at middle school?
At the middle school, right. Then chorus, we've got the chorus teacher moving into Then chorus, we've got the chorus teacher moving into general music, which then means no chorus. What we're trying to work on now is can we get that chorus by doing a couple of different things? A, creating the chorus, pushing up the teacher from chorus, general music, and potentially backlogging that with the person that would be taking over at the Yale with band or chorus instead of general music. So you've got, you've got to look at this schedule and the Yale schedule to make it work. We put in play a discussion about the high school schedule, but the problem with the high school schedule is it's a total rotation schedule. The idea that, you know, and I have contractual implications on how much time to go from one school to another and all that stuff, it just doesn't look easy. But again, we'll look at that stuff too.
Anybody else have anything?
Mike, my name is Ryan Dawsonson. I'm going to start off with my bias. I'm an elementary music teacher in County Franklin, but I did here in Norton. Just not only a question, but a cautionary tale, I guess I'll say. I just finished my 23rd year teaching music in Franklin. We used to have instruments during our school day in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. About 18 years ago, they were moved to after school. They have never come back during our school day. Fifth grade, that moves to after school about 16 years ago, it has never come back into our school day. Middle school general music was cut about 12 years ago, it has never come back into our school day. I know you said something earlier about we're hoping to get things back. It's really hard to get things back when they're gone. And I'm speaking tomorrow night at Franklin's school committee meeting to alert the parents of what they had 20 years ago as elementary students and what they have now, which looks nothing like what they had 20 years ago. My hope, and I know they're difficult decisions, but my hope is that we can find a way to get everything that we can of what we have to offer these students because we made cuts at middle school and say, well, they might come back. There is no time in middle school. They're only in middle school for three years. And if they were a sixth grader this year, that's only two years left, next year is gone, then they have eighth grade, they might be back for eighth grade. And then they're off in high school. Just wanted to put in my two cents.
So I appreciate, if I may, Matt, I appreciate your comments because I believe that I can't tackle that, that comment in a negative way. That, those are factual pieces of information I know for facts, I know in a lot of our Franklin's in the years having worked in that area. Let me, let me tell you a bigger story or a story that goes along the doors. You're not going to have a music program in this district in the next five to seven years at the high school level either. I'm the parent of the only junior in that program. There needs to be a discussion on what the priorities are, right? And the cliff is here for us. It is what it is. We made, we are making bad decisions that have long-term implications. We prioritize certain areas. If you remember, we used to have world language for like 26 days at the Yale School. I remember when I first got here, we had them for Yeah, it was once a week. So what's that, 36, 36 times? I don't know about you, but I speak a language only. I'm not picking up a language once a week for 36 weeks. So not going to happen. But we, we did that. I announced the other day, right before COVID, we, we cut the wellness program in this building where our kids were getting health because of budget cuts. We've, you know, we cut two math teachers, I said the other day, in this very building a few years ago because of budget cuts and changed the whole program of the double math. So we've made these bad decisions as the best of the worst, if you will. And they're off. I spent my, you know, my, spent a day apologizing to people. But at the end of the day, it's four positions out of 1.6 million. That's actually, only hitting four positions directly is pretty good. Now, what happens if tomorrow we have an influx of people moving into town? We have a lot of sales, the houses rentals, so on and so forth. Then the priority to Mr. Savaz's comment may be that all of a sudden we need not only that kindergarten position, but the priority is we actually need another kindergarten position because our class sizes are at 30 for kindergarten and that's not reasonable. So those are going to have, and then you have a bigger discussion, which is where, where do you actually put them? Because remember, we're, we're, we don't have any kids in our schools. Been fighting that fight for 10 years. So at the end of the day, when you look, when you look at the dynamics of, of priorities, I think to Mr. Savaz's comments, those are going to have to be the priorities that, that discussions you have to make. What's, what's not a good priority is having to choose the best of worth. It's just not, I'm sorry, it just doesn't make any sense to do that, but we have to balance the budget.
Does anybody have anything else?
I got to be quick. Speaking more from Nick Schleicher, the resident probably than a school committee member, but I think what's happening with the budget is obviously upsetting. To put it lightly, however, it's a hard reality that all public schools face and not just in Norton. The state of Massachusetts and Desi are constantly adding endless mandates, crippling of small suburban town budgets, which then forces us into situations like this. We as a community need to realize this is the fault of the system. Not a single person, not a group at Norton Public Schools, and most certainly not the town as a whole. We are, as we all know, we are mostly residential tax-based and we can't keep diving into the pockets of residents as the economy continues to crumble. If I use Mr. Portway for a moment as my example, he's a young teacher in this district. He learned last meeting from the, from the class offices of 2026. In two short years, he has gone above and beyond his job responsibilities. He's taken on the role of class advisor, best buddies advisor, decor advisor. If anyone is familiar with these three roles in a school district, the extra hours are simply insane. If you had to break down the stipend of any one of those three roles, I'm confident it would come down to mere nickels per hour, yet he's doing it anyway. It's because of faults in the system, not solely Norton Public Schools, we are potentially losing him. Losing him because he is the newest and not the tendered. We are forced to keep, we have to keep on paying the higher individuals who have rightfully earned their jobs as well and are safe due to the union contracts. If we were to incentivize a teacher who may near be full service to get that 80% pension, I'm sure we might be able to get someone to retire early and save both the district money and Mr. Portway. But there are also people who need to look out for their own futures in retirement. It's a game, it's a tough one. So at the expense of young blood who are ready to hit the pavement, running with fresh ideas and full commitments to the community, we have to pick up the newest member yet again. It's no one's individual's fault, it's the system we have all created. And then the administration, based on yet again the system, there was a foreign language requirement by our, it was not a requirement by our state at the seventh grade level. Mr. Portway would most likely be safe tonight if the state did require a foreign language at the seventh grade level. Norton Public Schools then has, could be forced to cut elsewhere, but within the confines of educational requirements, here we are. Initially, we requested a 12% budget increase to not be put in a situation like this. Ultimately, with the recommendation from FENCOM, not blaming them at all, the town approved the schools with a 4.8% budget increase. There's only so much money to go around. Again, it's not anyone's fault, it's the system. They're not getting what they requested, the schools did in fact increase their budget. However, the increased budget's still not covering the state mandates and that the state mandate plays on education. As we've kind of smiled up here, we can argue the words increase or cut, we're just saying it's semantics, but semantics do matter. Semantics can be subtle way to engage with human emotions, especially when the individuals who are engaging are not educated in the area. In life, understanding semantics is important and it's also something we all need to be aware of when engaging an audience in which we have influence over. Here is what I would like as a resident and also a school committee member, under the umbrella of transparency, and I'm glad some people have already brought this up. The cuts have been made, the pink slips have been given, but when if the district contains more money, where is that being prioritized and why? We cannot give false promises to our staff or our faculty or our students or our families that teachers and their programs are coming back. We need to live right now with the mindset, with the potential of the reality that what's done is done. However, it would be nice to have an understanding of where the priorities fell in order to potentially return some of those positions back to Norton Public Schools. Who and what comes back first on the list of what is lost? I understand we require a discussion beyond tonight and right now. However, where the priorities are of administration in regards to finances are extremely important, especially when financial decisions, with the looming financial decisions that we all know this town has. The system is a mess. The residents should know how, how we are going to prioritize the best. That is how we can make educational choices moving forward. Thank you.
I think that, I just want to piggyback on that because I too do agree that a lot of our issues do come from the state, time in our hands. So we've had our representatives at meetings before, you know, it is what it is. You can only fight so long, speak so loudly, and without a movement behind you, you know, it just is what it is. You have perfect timing, Zach. You know, with that said, I, I think that, and I know that I'm the one that always brings up Facebook and these guys always tell me to just stay off of it because it is hurtful. I, I think it's important to remember the conversation because I feel like a lot of the posts of late have been essentially calling administrators and us liars for the choice of words that we choose to choose to use. The conversation has to, I have to remind people of the conversation and it goes back to Dinesh's way of thinking is we really need to think of our budget in two different ways, the general budget and the mandated budget, period. So how people choose to look at whether it's a cut or whether we are not being fully funded, our general budget has not been fully funded in how long?
Well, at least the last three principal years, we've had to look at the general fund to take care of the mandated.
So we've had to take from the general fund to cover our mandated budget. That hurts and it perpetuates over time. And so here we are. There was also another comment on Facebook that we were, the school committee was pretty much to blame for this budget issue of no one knowing. I, I can speak for myself. I've been talking about these budget, budget issues. This is my seventh year on school committee and I've been speaking of them prior to that when I helped Spearhead override campaigns with, with friends of mine to try to make a difference in this community. So I, I think it's, you know, I understand why people don't like the word cut, but I think it's important to remember that we are not able to fund our general budget for many years now. And that is going to hurt and it's going to continue to hurt. So I said, when was I last meeting, Thursday? You know, to Joe's point, for years Norton needs to decide what we want to be when we grow up. And that's how this is going to go. We have been told time and time again to live within our means. This is us living within our means and it hurts. Those of you that are at the meeting on Thursday and heard some of our students and Mr. Portway speak, these decisions hurt and it's hard for people that sit in volunteer positions to do it year after year. So I just hope that when people are on Facebook, they can understand, you know, that it's fine if people don't agree with the word cut. We are not liars. We are not lying about where our budget is. We sit in these seats and we are the ones that have to make these decisions. So I just want to remind people about comments on Facebook again.
All of that sharing.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody else out there, anything? Yeah. Can you just state your name, I'm sorry? You may have to speak a little bit louder. You might need a teacher voice.
I'd like to start by speaking a little bit about the topic that brings many of us to meeting, B and B Chorus. We're B and B, in fact, my husband was in Norton A and B. My son is a fourth grader and just started B and B. My daughter also started B and B in fourth grade. That year it was cut short by COVID. The following year, due to COVID and then scheduling, she did one weekly 15-minute one-on-one Zoom session with Dr. Biata in order to keep her B and B available. That's how important it is. She persevered through those challenges. In fact, the whole B and B and the whole Chorus persevered through those challenges. When everything opened back up, B and B Chorus was the last thing to go back to COVID. I believe the school committee members, that Chorus or B and B Chorus have been helping Norton Public Schools recently. Those kids are incredibly talented, incredibly, I love their plays, passionate and dedicated. And they deserve a district, a school committee, a town that values them, that values Chorus and understands the impact of B and B Chorus. Secondly, I'd like to speak to cuts. Do you know that there used to be Chorus in the fourth grade? And Norton K. Doug, one of the schools, used to start world language, which is I can be a little bit jealous earlier. They used to be a health teacher in the school. There used to be more advanced math options. There's still no physical education. When my daughter was in kindergarten, there was a paraprofessional that quoted among kindergarten teachers, because they needed help. Those are all help. Now seventh grade world language is getting cut. Middle school Chorus, we don't, maybe it's getting cut because going to after school bands, you know, it's getting detected. It's a children's head fulfillment, it's nuts. That has been going on for the last 10 years and year after year, they're cut. And I know we all know this, we all know this. The administration doesn't need to say more, year after year. I'm just saying you guys can hear it, but still somehow a school that we have, we have the obvious cuts. Can the members of the school committee, can we all say that we're better for these cuts, that we're better without Chorus and B and B? Because if we can't say that, if you can't say that, we're going to choke them out. I understand the school committee is doing the best, they can't recall, but is it? And maybe by putting this such here, I mean, town meetings, that's right. And you all are doing your magic over the summer, it's amazing, and all the way through your magic again. But I just wonder, I lost my list, I just wonder if there's a way. I was at the, I was at the meeting here where the budget was presented. And there were some questions, but it's a lot of the present spreadsheets. And I don't know, if we all know the impact until it comes, and then it's all clear. And there's a way that we can, that we can break the budget down that's more accessible to everybody, that we all kind of like understand what this means. It's hard to give like this teacher, that teacher, but I don't know. Knowledge cut. Last week was all, everyone here, everybody was watching, everybody was helping count. We have to do something. Can't continue to make it work, full money from other sources, reliance from choice line. The school needs a sustainable budget. There are no creative solutions that are going to solve this long term. Yes, we have funded some big projects in town. That is what community needs to do. They identify needs and then they work together to come up with solutions. And that's what we need.
So can I, can I ask you a question?
Oh, I'm sure.
No, it's okay. So just understand, this is a genuine question because being elected officials sitting here, when you made the comment, are we doing enough as school committee members? I, I just wonder, what, what are your thoughts that we can do differently? How could we do things?
I'm sorry, I mean, like, are we doing enough, you all, are we?
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was
And I don't know, I don't know the solution, I think we even, I don't know what it would look like, but I feel like by the time it gets to town meeting, it's just like a purpose scale.
It is a purpose scale.
The question is town meeting because it's just like, I don't know, that's what it is. So I don't know what that would look like, but a way to
So I can, I can tell you, I, I can give you a little bit of input because this is how it started for me. I went to a school committee meeting when we were having budget issues, I think in 2007, 2008. I had a four and a two-year-old, I guess, and trying to decide, do I go to Norton Public Schools or do I send them to charter school? Because at that time, it was all charter school. So what I did, I got involved. I showed up. Every town meeting, school committee meetings that I could go to, I went to the superintendent, it was before Dr. Bayetta, I asked questions, I learned from people, and then I surrounded myself with like-minded people who wanted to make a change for this community. So that is part of it, is we need more people. This is a tremendous meeting that this many people showed up to our meeting, but we need more of it. Because we can only do so much with the budget, we can only say it so many times. And if nobody is listening and people are going to Facebook and getting their news from Norton Neighbors or whatever Facebook page they're getting at, it's not accurate, period. It just isn't. And that could be any page, that just came to mind. We're all getting this thing on the air for it. So I hope all you have my back for that one. But it's, it's just, that's not, people are going to Facebook for their information and it is not accurate.
So, so I think a couple of real quick things. The, the budget process in 2012, 2013, which was the budget I walked into, was presented as a one-page. We changed it and published everything. It's a lot of information. I know some of the members of the committee that are newer are I know some of the members of the committee that are newer are saying, "Okay, what does this really mean? And where's the money?", and so on and so forth. So Dr. O'Neill and I have already had a sidebar from the comments the other day about trying to get some type of communication that goes out. We published about, I believe it was nine different times we published our budget, meeting times, newsletter of the week, you know, all of that stuff. This is the hardest part of this. I firmly believe that what I saw Thursday and what I'm seeing today, there's a potential here for you folks as a community to become more, quote, activist in the schools and the town. Because I don't think it's just schools, I think it's town. We always save the day. That's our problem. We always find a way to get another five bucks out of something, to break back somebody, or to create, or to be able to purchase. And that happens year after year after year. The difference between us and a local community that has no fees for transportation or otherwise, where they have a lot of money, they have about 150 more students enrolled, $5 million per year. Now imagine that. Imagine $5 million more per year for 150 students. That's the difference in enrollment, okay? And that community is very, it's wealthy, okay? That said, they've made a decision to also spend that money in their education. We have a very small ability as a community, and I speak to this as looking at it as a person who's been involved in the community because of my position. We're the businesses, right? We're trying to grow the businesses every single, every single year, we're trying to do something, and all of it is positive. I mean, you take a look at New England Ice Cream up the road, that's bringing in more money than we had before they were there, even with the tax write-offs and all that stuff, and all the eastern side of town, moving by the eastern side of town, I should say. But it's still, it's still not there. And then the last part is the part that we couldn't determine as a school committee or superintendent, and that's COVID and the expenses that have come out. If inflation goes up, let's choose a number, 8%, what does that mean for the wax that gets delivered in the summertime? It means that that company is charging you more, not only for the wax, but for the delivery of the wax. We now have delivery charges, we never had. Companies are now charging us delivery charges. We'd have minimal charges, because they were going to hit 17 different school districts on the same day. Now they're giving us a delivery charge. All of that came out of COVID without the funding that goes with it. The SOA money, 119 districts, I know I'm beating a dead horse yet again, old horse. 119 districts getting $30 or $60 per kid, right? 90% of the money going to 10 school districts? That's crazy. And to Nick's point, and Nick and I disagree on some things, but the fact that we've always agreed on one thing, the state mandates have got to stop. They can't continue to come down the way they're coming down. We shouldn't be told, you know, what kind of X, Y, Z we're going to have and not have. We have to have it, it's our decision to go with the best price, the best product, or what we can afford. Those are the three options.
And I think to your point too, we're not just talking state mandates, we're talking unfunded mandates. State is coming to us saying, "You have to do this" with zero money behind it. And then it's left to us, and the 20,000 tax barrier, well, less than 20,000 tax barriers, but 20,000 community members to figure out, how are we going to take this mandate, fund it, without taking away something else? You know, then that's how it works. It's unfortunate, but that's how it goes.
I also just want to say, I'm sorry, just to hold you up for one second, that when Dr. Biata says that we somehow always save the day, that is an accurate statement. We do the best we can with decisions that we have to make, and I have been told, and I'm sure these guys have as well, many times, just let them feel the pain. Let the community feel the pain. They don't want an override, so let them feel the pain of the decisions that have to make. I cannot personally sit in this seat and hurt our students. The day that that happens, I leave. I'm done. Somebody else can run for my seat. That's not why I'm sitting here. I sit here for all of our children. That's why I chose to do this seven years ago, and will continue to do it for another two years.
And I think by "we", meaning schools, police, fire, DPW, that's "we", it's not just us. The other, you know, we're down still two police officers. We're still, we're still short firefighters, you know? So it goes, I think, just to clarify, so it doesn't sound like on camera, we're saying, "We, we, we, we're the only ones to do anything." The entire town shows.
Right, it's a community, yeah.
My name's Amy, I guess also, actually, I'm not a big backing on, you just about to say mandates, and kind of what can we do, not to be making a lot of change, but it seems like we're drowning in the mandates, preventing us from keeping the programs that we need. And that I have students in this town, and it sounds great to me, because I want the programs to continue, but at some point, even though our override might not sustain, continue to be better up, I would say, for what? If you do as, school committee, what can we do as a community to support you, what needs to happen? Because we're just going to continue to drown. It is a big, very, very scary, you have to change, there's no way out of this, I'm sure.
I'm going to answer this, and I'm going to, and the idea that we're liars on Facebook, et cetera, there are people in this audience who know you very well, will tell you, I am very, very truthful. So I will tell you exactly what you can do, nothing. And here's why. Because your state legislature, and I know some of them, friends of some of them, they are not going to take out of the state budget something to pay for something that they can push off on us. That is the reality. That is what they do. So they say, "Okay, you have to do X and pay for it."
What do you have to do X?
Because it's the law. They say, "You have to have this program, and you have to pay for it." And then they go to their voting block and say, "Look what I did. I passed this." Let me pass the price, is what we did. So that's the reality of politics. It's, and it's not Massachusetts, et cetera. That's what, what happens. So that's the honest answer to that. The honest answer to that is, other than wiping out the entire state legislature of Massachusetts and starting fresh, there's not much you can do, because most of them aren't going to do that. I'm just being very real. They're going to pass it on and say, "The towns can pay for it, the cities can pay for it, and we'll take the crap." Okay, good.
So, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. You know, I think we, we go around and round and round, which we've done. You know, we've done, frankly, for years, we were round and round. To Dr. Biata's point, we've always found a way. And speaking on the local level, if we don't get X, Y, and Z, it never seems to find out publicly what the other departments didn't get. They didn't get X, Y, and Z. So we sit here as a school committee and say, "Well, we need 1.2." We don't necessarily always hear about what the fire department didn't get, the police department didn't get, DPW didn't get. You know, so those are more for us as citizens, we would like to know what our services look like as well. You know, for example, for 10 years, the trucking fire station was never open. It's been open now for two years. But I understood that might be grant money or something like that, I don't know. So we never hear the pain from the town side, which I don't know how we will find that out. But my point is this, for us, we would need 1.2 million dollars, I forget the number at this point. We would have to take it from somewhere else, which we also is something we don't want to do, because we're passing on our pain to, maybe we have less police on the road, maybe we have less firefighters. So it's, to Dinesh's point, that's, it's political to a point, but it's also, we can't get it from somebody else. And that's the other problem with this, is who's going to give, which other departments would be affected to fully fund X, Y, or Z? I forgot my second one.
And that's, that's true on the micro level as well, right? It's not just, it's not the town, it's the school committee. So when someone gets up and says, "We can't cut music, we shouldn't cut music, we should find a way", understand that finding a way is cutting something else. It's not going to the money tree and saying, "Okay, all right, we'll just, you know, we'll just pay for it now." If we're, if we're going to fund X, we have to not fund Y. Because we're given a budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we have to stay within that. And that's exactly what we're doing right here. So if you think about what we're doing, we're actually, it's not like we're going in and saying, "Okay, what cuts do we have?" I would actually make the, make the observation that we're going there, but what we're doing is just saying, "Okay, we have X as a budget. What's our number one priority? It's this, okay? That costs this, boom, that could tie the equation. Our second priority, third priority, and we go up the priority ladder until we have no money left. Not until we don't want to do something, until we have no money left. And anything above that, unfortunately, the funding is not there. And that's what's happening in this case. We, we used our entirety of our budget, and we couldn't get to where we wanted to be. It's not an idea that, you know, we wanted to cut music, or we wanted to cut world language. I think we've said a hundred times, Tom. Great guy, Bobby Coleman, great guy. Nobody wants him to die. We'd love to keep him here for the rest of his career, but that's just not the reality. It always, always comes down to the money. It is always the money. It's, it's not a personal thing, it's not, "We don't like that program anymore, or we don't like the people in it." We simply do what we can do with the money we have. And I'll tell you, and I'll be very honest again, so, I said on Thursday, I was going to say, I was going to say my comments and say them tonight, and I said, "People are not going to like..." Yeah, you're probably going to want to sit down. Joe will tell you, I can get lonely. So I said I was probably going to say some stuff, and people were not going to like it, that's what hurts people. So I'm going to say it. And again, it's, yeah, everyone knows. You know, I've been doing this for, this is my 15th year of being on school. It's a long time. It's a long time of blood, sweat, tears. I don't know what I have left to be, to be honest with you at this point. I got a younger daughter, my older daughter just graduated, my younger daughter, she's going to ninth grade. Originally, the idea was to not see them through it. I don't know. I don't know where I'm at at this point. So, you know, if, if I'm telling you the truth, and the gentleman who's a music teacher, I think he said frankly, you know, he's talking about, "We need to try and save this and save this." Listen, if I'm a betting man, I bet in five years, as Joe said, no high school music. I'll bet in five years, no music. No qualifying in that. No high school, middle school, no music. That is absolutely the direction we're heading. And I will tell you, you know, if you see us cutting music, you've just seen where that firing ladder goes to, right? You've seen where it is. Our budget is not getting better, it's getting worse. So there is no reason in the world to think that next year, we're going to be able to fund music. I don't know why you would think that, quite honestly. And we're not the enemy. Math is the enemy. It's simple numbers, it's all about the money, right? So we had somebody who asked, well, you know, "When could we have learned about this? When could we have, like, figured out what was going on here?" Well, I would make the observation, and in one of the countless meetings we had on, we had a number of meetings on the budget prior to town meeting. And somebody said, I think town meeting was the rubber stamp? Yeah, it was. You know why it was? There were 130 people there. In a town of 14,000 registered voters, there were 130 people there. It's great that we have a packed room right now, this is the most people I've seen in a school committee. I guess my question is, where were you? Where were you? I mean, at this point, again, 15 town meetings, it's the same people there. And I'm not criticizing them for where we're at, they showed up. But that was the last thing, that was, that was the rubber stamp, because nobody showed up at that and asked any questions. We passed the budget of whatever our town budget is, it's 70-something million dollars. Not one question. Not one person asked a question. Prior to that, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, by law, we have to have an open meeting on the budget. Public hearing on the budget. We used to have it in the auditorium. We now have it attached to our regular meetings in the library. Anybody want to know why? Nobody showed up. Nobody cared.
Same with FinCon.
FinCon does, yes. We actually have to meet with FinCon, so they, they find out our budget. But Ronnie, I think you're chair of FinCon right now?
We had a hearing, zero.
Nobody. Nobody shows up. So I got to be honest with you, like, what can we do? There's nothing we can do. And as a town, honestly, I just don't know that we value education enough, quite honestly. And Nick is right, I think Dan Orber made the point. We have X dollars. That's, that's what we have as a town, and that's how we spend it. And it's unfortunate that we're here, but I've been on this school committee for 15 years, and I've been talking about it for at least 14 of them. And for probably 10 of them, I've been talking about the fact that we have to start rethinking how we're doing this budget. It does not work. It doesn't work. And I get, like, you know, I get other departments have their issues too, but I don't think any other budget in town has the singular oddities that the school budget has. We have a massive, massive mandated budget, and it kills us every year. Joe mentioned earlier about housing, I can't remember what the reference was, but we have some housing, there might be a couple of kids going, kids in there. You better hope there's no out-of-district kids. Because if there's four or five out-of-district kids, then one big trouble. Four of them at 150, we're talking about $600,000. Now we've got to cut $600,000 from somewhere in the general education budget. Any ideas, anybody? This is the reality, reality of it, right? It's unfortunate, and I don't mean to be, and please understand that I speak solely for myself, not for any school committee member. I don't speak for my family. My wife wanted to make sure that I said that to everybody. And I do not direct this at the people in this room. Because I, again, when, when your thing gets cut, it hurts and you show up. And I'll, I'll disagree with something that's been said a couple of times here, that we always save, we save ourselves. We don't, we don't hurt enough. No, we don't. We don't save them. When the money's short, we underfunds what we have to underfund. The problem is, nobody noticed, because it wasn't that popular a program, or that bigger program, or nobody cared. This is the reality of the town we live in. It's extremely apathetic when it comes to stuff like this. People do not show up in vote. Last override, Sharon, you might know the balance of the votes, do you remember what the number was?
We lost the first, the 2016, we lost by less than 100 votes, and the next...
770.
Sharon, 2016, before I lost 193 votes, and 2017, I lost like 800 votes.
Peter, do you remember?
You and Sharon and Sarah, that you were, you were part of the override.
Peter, do you remember what the numbers were on the votes, the yeses, who knows?
2,800 yes, 2,800 no, the 2017, and 22,000 no, yeses, 20,000 no, and 20,000 yeses.
So, so here you go. So, so what happened? What happened then? Did we vote no on an override? No, we didn't vote no on an override. Most people voted, I don't care. Most people didn't show up. That's why we're at, folks. That's why we're at. Honestly, we should all be turning to our kids and saying, "I'm sorry. I'm sorry, because I didn't bother to show up for that meeting. I didn't bother to show up for that town meeting. I didn't bother to find out what the budget was." Where we're at right now, not because of the school committee, honestly, not really because of the mandates, we're here because of us. Each one of us, each one of us has a hand in this. And I'm sorry, I know, I know that's a harsh thing to say, and people don't want to hear it, but that is the reality of where we're at right now, and that's why we're here.
Oh, take it away? Um, so I don't want to add people who are liar or whatever, like such a subject, but, you know, I'm just standing there thinking, like, okay, we're playing world languages and music programs, and that's devastating for kids. But I'm thinking, like, this is going to be devastating for our future. So do you guys know how can, like, that surrounding district that offers music in seventh grade and have funded music programs, you know, fourth, fifth, and eighth grade? And the charters get a lot?
It's a, it's a mixed bag, to be quite honest, I did reach out. It's a mixed bag of who has oral language at middle school versus who doesn't. In some cases, it's more of a cultural class, and they don't see Spanish or French until high school, in some cases. And these are, by the way, these are some communities that through the decades have been known as, "High-end, we spend money." But possibly the business has caused that. When it comes to music, we know, I know a program to the area that I shared about. One of the dynamics of all music is that COVID devastated that instrumental music, and chorus, but definitely.
I just worry about our future of being a competitive school district and the amount of dependence we have on our choice line for funding our general education budget. So if we start to not get students wanting to come here, because maybe the carrot will want to drag 15 extra minutes to bring their kid here, because you know what? Their school district's offering the same thing. You know, North, right, you know, French and Spanish is up in grade in North, North, French, or Spanish. So why drive my kid extra, I could send them to our district? You know, maybe... You know, maybe else has a kid to the charter school or private school, so you lose money that way. Um, so I don't know. I don't wanna add to the fire, I'm just trying to make the point, like, it's making me nervous.
So, follow this interesting point, and we, we talk about the cliff a lot, and what you're talking about is the rocks at the bottom of it, right? So, we have, we have come from a point where we thought we need to make cuts that are gonna kill, not because we wanted to, but because that's where we were at. And, and Joe Kirk, I'm not, but that was, that was the year that I finally thought, and I said, okay.
That is correct.
We're gonna have to use school choice money for our operation.
You have to, if you, or, or the one that you lost.
Yes, which is either, and anybody who's filed for school committee, and nobody has, well, I voted against, I voted against using school choice money as operational, because it should not be used for exactly this reason. The next year, I kinda said, we have to do it, we gotta use our operation, because we're gonna have to start doing things like pay to play for scores, and I can't remember what the, and a couple of other things, where it's like, those needs are absolutely insane to do this. And then we switched to pay to play, which effectively would have eliminated most, quite honestly. Um, and, and we made the decision at that point, same here, to actually fund free full day K, or to start a program. And, and the reason was, because Dr. Bedd and myself, years prior, had done some research, and said, okay, well, all these people are going to charter, why are you going? And they said, well, they had free full day K, and so we went there, and we just stayed, right? There's this real age basis, is what they said. So, we started our own program against everybody. Other people said, you're crazy, the level work. Guess what? It worked. All of a sudden, our charter numbers, the charter cost went way out by...
Over a million.
Over a million dollars. School choice, we now pay one point three, one point three, so two point three million swing. If all of a sudden, everybody says, I'm going to charter, or I'm holding kids, I'm using school choice, et cetera, we're done. That's it. And we're done, right? Cut two point three million dollars for teachers. So, yeah, we better be competitive. You're absolutely right. I mean, there's, there's no way, sir, we are not competitive, we will die.
Thank you. Um, so I am our husband, uh, who listens to my toddler's family since ago, and last week, he listens to my brother and daughter, so I figured, well, I'm a sister. Um, so I have to say, yes, Nick, I agree with you. We are in a broken system. I believe that was one of, one of my, one and only comment in meeting friends on Facebook was saying, yes, we are in a broken system. Yes, our out of district placement has increased fourteen percent. Um, I am a public school teacher, I've been a public school teacher now for seven years. Um, so wearing my teacher hat right now, yes, I agree with you. Um, in terms of what can we do, well, nothing. I think there's a couple of things. Um, so my first question is, um, Norton is part of MASC? Yes? No? You just paid, yes, okay. So, as you heard from my husband, as you heard from Dr. Bedd, this is not unique to Norton. This is happening in Brockton, this is happening in Franklin, this is happening in Holborn, this is happening in here, and here, and here. So, when you have these MASC meetings, are you talking to one another and saying, hey, this is a problem? Hey, is there a way that we can band together to express that this is a problem? And I'm not accusing you, I'm just asking, it's, it's a legit question. Because, again, it's strength in numbers, right? That's, that's how these things work, right? Um, so that's my rhetorical question. Um, and then, to answer the question of, well, what can we do? Yes, we show up. That's the starters, right? So, we show up. The other thing we can do is, we need to pay more attention, we need to pay attention to things. And one thing that I would suggest that everyone pay attention to right now is the Fair Trade Act that was passed to the law. Pay attention to that, and pay attention to how that money is going to be allocated. Because I'll tell you right now, what they originally promised us is changing. Pay attention to that. That's what we can do. So now, putting on my parent hat for a moment. My daughter, Olivia, I'll be honest with you, we, she was in Swansea with me, uh, where I teach, up until this year, sixth grade. Why? Nothing against Norton, it was just convenience, please. She was post-immigration in fourth grade, for YAL, does that logistically make sense? However, COVID happened. So, trying to manage three different school districts with three different COVID schedules is just not okay. So, yes, I not paid the best attention to what's happened over the years, probably, because, again, she's our oldest. However, I was paying attention, I did notice things, I've noticed great things that have changed, like full day K, awesome. That should happen, probably much sooner than it did, great class. So, my closing point, which, again, is beating a dead horse, but you know what? It's already dead, so I'm just beating it. Uh, is, class of two thousand twenty-nine, at this juncture of this trajectory, I'm giving ready to affectionately call the class of have-nots. So, my daughter was COVID year, third grade. These sixth graders have had this COVID situation happen. This sixth grade year was their first true year of what a normal education looks like since they were in second grade, since they were seven and eight years old. She had an awesome year, she loves it here, she is so happy that we transferred her here. So, again, it's very difficult as a parent to see her world come crashing down again, after again, after again. It brought me back to four years ago, and I had to tell her, I'm sorry, sweetie, you're not going on those field trips. I'm sorry, sweetie, you're not going back to school anymore. I'm sorry, honey, this is your first COVID birthday, here's your second COVID birthday. No, you are not having a chorus concert, no, you are not doing this, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And I know that this is not on you, this is on our broken system, but I still feel that it needs to be stated, that that class of two thousand twenty-nine is becoming the class of have-nots. I'm sorry, honey, no, I know you were looking forward to taking Spanish next year, well, it's not gonna happen. I'm sorry, honey, I know you love chorus, I can't guarantee it's gonna happen with that. How many more years am I going to be staying with her for? I'm sorry, honey. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Monby, uh, Tom moderator, former select board member, husband to a music teacher, and parents of two daughters that are union to the parts, including one who is going to retire. Currently, behind the scenes, we're supposed to hold a discussion on what the budget when the drama's...
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry. When the drama's cool, it's after the party, but actually, it's pretty great. I was basically gonna say what Dennis was saying, but just nicer. So, I'd like to bang the drum of participation. As Tom moderator, I, I really wanna see our numbers go up. I think you mentioned, I'm sure, there were some more people at the meeting. We originally didn't stop for even the budget, that's on me. We passed the article, we didn't go page by page. One of the finance committee members brought up a motion to reopen that, so we could go page by page to make sure people had questions. His goal for that was to try to bring up the fact that schools needed to have stabilization on streets or open. That vote was originally very, very close. It was about forty people in this room, but we started one, so now, I grew that size about thousand percent, so we're gonna have a discussion, not like maybe just talk about it. So, you know what's really important, talking about how town stuff, what's worse is you need to care about town stuff, and right now, because we have to pay attention, now we have to care, you know, in these areas. So, I wanna thank you guys, we're all that you did, but I want to thank everybody that turned up and talked about the way town stuff, even if you're just making fun of it, and keeps it in mind. I think it's not to be more participation, but on boards and meetings and, and town meetings. Thank you.
That's a cap. Yes, sir.
Time for the business portion of the, uh, of the, uh...
Zach, just say your name, though, just say your name, I don't know.
Zach?
Just say your name.
Uh, Zach Tillis, three Richmond Drive. What is the minimum for North ends in tonight? Let, let us know what the minimum, the two doctors, the one leaving, one staying, uh, is to restore these services, just look at it. Obviously, it can't be one point nine billion, but what is the number to restore those services? And if you sent that to us, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Zach. Anybody else? Beth, here, I just want to say something to the crowd. Both you and other members of our community night talked about the meeting friends that is Facebook. Um, and I ask you, I implore you, as Dr. Bagdad leaves and I take over this new role, please come to us with your questions and your comments and your concerns about what is happening in our schools. We will be honest and transparent with you. And the more often we have open, clear communications, the more often I hope that the truth will be what is out there on Facebook and on social media. So, please, if you see someone asking questions online, or you see someone sharing information that you're not sure is true, come to the source, ask us, we will share everything we can with you, and tell your friends to do the same. Thank you.
I'm out of the chair for you, uh, to the committee, uh, giving an estimate cost right now, the two world language teachers total cost is one eighteen, seven hundred, as they're actually, uh, salaried for next year. The music teacher change, um, is going out at seventy-seven, you can probably get away with something around fifty-five, sixty range. You're at about two hundred eighty thousand to restore those positions back into the budget. I'll, I'll get you some sense in my night before the end of the week, and we'll share it, maybe I'll just send it out to all families on how much we can possibly restore these services up to the state. Thank you, Zach. I, I just wanna go on record as well, as much as, uh, Mr. Tillis and I go back and forth a lot, um, most of the time, it's like a volleyball game. He's the person who made motion at FinCon for the seven hundred thousand dollars, and it was seconded, and, uh, a unanimous vote, I remember. So, there was a lot of challenge by Zach, but at the same time, at the end of the day, he said, you know, we need to do something, right? If it's another X number of dollars, then, you know, if it can happen, great, if it can't, it can't, but I, I do think that he, and I say this, Zach respectfully, he knows the system, he knows the system you guys have to deal with, the police chief has to deal with, the fire chief needs to deal with, and the rest of the board that's here, members of the board, uh, Bonnie and Paul that I get tonight as well. So, it's a little bit of a game, a game, as you know, to Nick's comment, that I couldn't agree more, Nick, uh, about the system. One of the questions that parents should ask the state legislators is the following question. What is the deal with thirty bucks? We've been doing thirty dollars per student for about a hundred and twenty districts for almost fifteen years. It's the same thirty bucks. Do you guys still get your eggs for the same cost from fifteen years ago? So, I, we've asked, as an association, my, my professional, we've asked and said, why? Here's the response I got, it's a wonderful response, wasn't from our elected officials, it was actually from one of the mass, uh, mass taxpayers, uh, there needs to be some political game skin, excuse me, political skin in this game. That was the answer I received. Because I asked the question, I said, I've been a superintendent fifteen years on July first of this year, I've been dealing with thirty dollars per student. Matter of fact, we've had twenty-five dollars a year, that was really bad, and we had a couple of years where they came in at a hundred, and we were like, whoo, a hundred, loading. So, how do we get a hundred and nineteen districts to get thirty dollars? And, oh, by the way, we're gonna save the day by giving you sixty, but we're not gonna give you a hundred. It should be, we start with a hundred for every district, and then we make it one fifty or two hundred. We have a district in Massachusetts that has seven hundred kids, five hundred local, superintendent of, of, uh, and I talk daily, she used to work for me in another district. She's getting seven hundred and twenty dollars per student. Think about that. We're getting thirty or sixty. We're lucky. So, that, those are the, those are the kinds of questions, and then last, because I, I wanna support, uh, an earlier comment, uh, that was made, uh, about the question of AMSC. I'm a former school committee member for six years, I've been a superintendent all the time, you guys know, I've been in this business for thirty-two years, don't waste your time. We do it because I gotta keep the policies online and all of that stuff, but it's six thousand dollars a year. It, we, we get resolutions, and the resolutions that we get go nowhere. There's no, you know, there's a, let's study special ed, let's study ELL, let's study, let's study, let's study. We've been studying top certain, top two fifteen years, so, it, it, no disrespect to my school committee, no disrespect to any other school committee members, it's, that system is broken as well.
And to piggyback, like, another great question last legislation would be, why is school choice dollars still five thousand dollars per student? Adam Rowe is sending their kids here, not just that, bro, anyone who's school choices in, he's sent us five thousand dollars. Great, obviously, we reap the benefits to, you know, the two point six, one point three, whatever million dollars it is. However, it's been five thousand dollars for how many years?
Twenty, twenty, twenty.
Do you know how much you spend per kid in Norton? Just under sixteen thousand. So, start figuring out the math, why is it still five thousand dollars? There's not a bigger supporter of school choice, probably in this building, in terms of love school choice. Give the parents, the parents send that kid forty-five minutes away to the best school in the state, go for it. Why is it five thousand dollars? Do you know why? Because your system's broken. The system is broken, and it's putting money into the system instead of putting money into your students. It's that simple.
I would understand, both Nick and Joe, and say that, correct or wrong. Money that we take in through school choice is the one thing that has not gone up. Everything else, that we pay out, is going up. Charter schools, spent tuition, everything goes up. The money we take in, states will rock this thing.
Anything else for anybody? Well, thank you. Um, so, uh, my name is Bonnie. Hi, Mrs. Cowan. My name is Bonnie, I'm Kevin. I'm a parent, I'm the current chair of the finance committee, and I'm, uh, I'll say it loud mouth. Um, and I've been on town committees, as some of you know, for a long time. I've come to these meetings, I can safely say I'm one of those people that does come to these meetings, does pay attention, I've been to every town meeting in the last twelve years, um, and was a part of two override attempts, um, in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. People that don't know the history, there were override attempts also in two thousand seven and two thousand eight, I don't, Peter, but I don't know the numbers there, I know that they've lost. We have had some death explosions that have been successful, although people that are maybe unaware, um, we have not passed override in this town, a general override in the entire town, that, that has been a lot in Massachusetts, which means that we cannot raise taxes by more than two and a half percent any given year. So, ask any department how high over last year's budget, uh, their level services go, and they will tell you usually, it's close to, if not more than, two and a half percent. So, in this town, um, I've been a member of the finance committee for six years, and this town, we, year on year, will use free cash to fund our general budget, which is other than the schools, the other thirty percent of budgets. Even enough, we spent seventy percent, every town does this, we spent seventy percent of our budget on schools, thirty percent on everything else. So, as you were saying, the biggest employer in town is the school department. Other departments heard too, we can't fund overtime for police and fire, that's just one example. We can't fund overtime for police and fire until October. So, in July, something happens called free cash, some departments, most departments have money that they can do, it's called turn back, and they give it back to the town to be redistributed, and that money is spent to backfill or fund the police and fire overtime budgets. We do that every year in this town. That's how we pay our overtime budget, so we don't have the money to do that for July first, for the budget that you voted on in May, if you were there. Um, and we, um, use six hundred thousand dollars for free cash to fund our, our general budget every year, that's how we do it. So, when we say we find a way, that's one of the ways that we can find a way to fund the budget in this town. Um, Sherry and I used to run, Sherry in particular, started running recreation department for free, uh, in two thousand five, I don't remember, um, but the rest... free, uh, in 2005, we even, I, I don't remember, um, but the recreation commission, which was nine people, uh, ran the recreation department for, uh, nine years or something like that, 10 years, with no funding whatsoever from the town, um, employees, and we would fundraise for things like Saturday, all the things that people join the town, the home grading, um, everything. And we finally were able to get a part-time employee. That person is still the only employee of that department, unfortunately, but that was something that put it in a positive direction. This town is sort of used to doing without and making good. I think, I wanted to come up to underscore, one, what Ted said is exactly right, that we don't need to combat unknowable, we need to combat happening. We absolutely have support for things when people hear that things have been cut and didn't know about it, and then show up and find out what's happened, and are paying attention because it impacts them directly. But we don't have people that are paying attention year-round, that are going to finance committee meetings, which let me tell you, you are missing out. Good times from February to today, and again, in September till we have the October town meeting in the fall. We tried, um, Sherry and I should start a Facebook page on 2016 to keep people well-informed, and, uh, people will rather go to Norton Neighbors and read things on that Facebook page that may or may not be true. Not that I'm saying that everything is posted on our Facebook page is true, but I will say, that's where a lot of people get their news, is from Norton Neighbors. And I personally was banned from Norton Neighbors for being loud, um, having too much to say, challenging the opinions of people who run that page, and that's fine, that I, again, we have another Facebook page we can use, but I also wanted to underscore and caution people, yes, there are certain voices that you don't hear in certain places because they're banned. One of our friends elected for, I'm just not, we banned Norton Neighbors as well for the same reason. So, I just wanted basically to underscore some of the things that Ted said, and also from the finance committee perspective, we can't, we can't cut a pie that's too small any differently, um, or much differently than we already do, and anyone wants to know more about that, I'm happy to answer questions, but it's, a lot of times, it's too much to go into. As you can see, we spent all this time that we've got tonight just talking about the schools, and talking about the towns that the budgets are the same, the same, uh, frankly. Um, so I just wanted to encourage people to come to town meeting and get involved and pay attention, because that is the only way that things change.
Thank you.
Yes, um, Peter Wain, Gordon Mary, and I've been living this town all my life, I've been, I've been, I've been participating in, in all the meetings, and taking notes and put on my Facebook pages, I'm a better broadcaster than, than, I'm a better, I keep what goes on in Norton than more than anything, because people need to get news from yours, Peter Wain, Gordon, from Peter J. Wains, and not from Norton News, which is nothing but fake news, and I, whether real or discrediting, that, and people need to understand that town meeting is the only way to ask questions, and ask everybody. Be like me, participate in your town meetings, and part of the meetings, and take notes, and be educated about what goes on within. Thank you.
Me?
I'm probably gonna watch. I'm gonna try not to. I'm Jenny Taylor, this is probably my last time speaking with you guys as president of the Norton Teachers Association. Um, you, you guys here are talking about your kids, and we absolutely don't want, we don't want to lose class either, but you want to see that Norton is a community that has done what we continue to do. We are a running community, we're a community that sees something, like you said, told AK, we saw it, we saw that there was an opportunity, and we went for it. I just want you guys to know that we're, we are gonna continue working with the district, and finding ways that we can make sure that these cuts are the least impactful to your kids, from having more, from the music program to the world language, to even the ACs being cut in the high school, what that looks like. The administration is gonna be talking with us and working with that. And now, granted, I'm now going president right now, I've got 18 days left, but what I can tell you about this association is that I had met Sherry Cohen in a basement, and I had no idea whose house it was, and she showed up, and there was a bunch of people talking about it, it was a good house, I still don't even know. I showed up, and I wanted to understand, as a new head of the world teacher at the time, as, as someone that was coming up, how can we make sure that Norton is a place that we continually come to? And for those of you who don't know, I'll say it one last time, I am here because my mother was a teacher in this district for 36 years before I came here. Uh, my mom was Jen O'Neil's mentor when Jen was starting his teaching. Um, I came to Norton because I knew what this community had in it, to make it keep running, right? So, whether or not I'm in front of you guys as a, as a president of the association or not, this association will be here to help you guys organize if we need to do things going forward. I can guarantee you that of our organization, I can tell you that because every single one of the teachers, and paraprofessionals, and educators in this district care, and the admin care as well, so don't think that we don't. We are with you, we are going to find the ways, but work with us in doing that, because as someone who said before, we are stronger, you were saying before, we are stronger when we're working together. We have done that through our contracts in this district, we added the Paris, you guys have been hearing a little bit, that we added our SOPAs and CODAs to our contract as well, and continually to add and bring more to Norton. That won't stop, we will be here, just come with us too, okay? I promise you that. And for our school committee, just a point of personal privilege, um, thank you so much for the time that you've taken over the years, because I had no idea how much time it was until I started having to come to all of your school meetings every afternoon Thursday, and I'm bringing food, and Link was out, he was telling me, what are you doing, bringing you dinner? We've got so much work to do, we gotta sit here and do this. We will sit there, and we will have those conversations with you, and you will be there, just show us, tell us when to show up, we'll, we'll come, okay? Thank you, guys, for your help.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Well, thank you, guys, all for coming. I, we still have more to do on the agenda, if anybody wants to stay and hear about some of the other stuff we have to go through, um, but in case you guys decide to leave, I just really want to thank you all for taking the time to come up tonight. It is very much appreciated to listen to, you know, kind of where we've been, where we're at right now, and hopefully where we're headed. Again, any questions, always feel free to reach out. Thank you all.
Listen, after my rant about the tent meetings, feel free to leave this. This has been a long one. I can't, it's not, it was hard listening specifically, so feel free to leave.
I was, I was gonna leave, I'm ashamed of that. So, next up?
Take the vote now, he's gone, he's gone.
Probably don't know where to get him, so.
It's a long area.
I can't get away.
All right, thanks back. We can go back to the meeting. All right, so we're gonna vote to approve revisions to the Norton Teachers Association contract.
Right, so you have, have which, yellow and everything else? Major changes, the SOPA code agreement that we put in here, competitive salary, I believe, we really recognize that some of these folks are part-time, not full-time. Um, the total cost, um, for the budget on this is below $14,000, which we budgeted for. Um, the change in the languages is that they become potentially 5PO, people that are put into the NTA, adds 5PO. All the other changes that you see are corrective stuff, that were not carried over from a prior contract, um, and were agreed upon, as you know, from the Labor Management Committee agreement from way back, uh, school committee. Um, we just had it in the back to make sure that we added the SOPAs and CODAs that needed to be, made to make sure that things like three days, uh, three bargaining units, uh, two bargaining units are recognized in the contract, and, um, we added, uh, the code language, the biggest difference in the code language, again, is the salary scale, and , um, their working conditions become that they're now part of the unions, and they have some rights for, uh, it was a really good meeting, uh, just to inform the committee, we had a nice back and forth. This is, this is only adding them for the two years of the three years of the contract, so we're not retroactive, no retroactive, they were employee at wills, we did have contracts this year, and the union agreed that going forward, they would be added into the contract for the last two years. Therefore, when you negotiate in the two years, you're gonna negotiate the teachers, the Paris, and the SOPA quotas at the same time. They're all represented by one bargaining unit, um, and the party will come to the table with their respective changes that they'll be asking. It's a good contract, gets us done, move forward, and the union, NTA, really wanted to do this, as you know, but, uh, we were okay with it, it always does require a vote and a representation. You already, yeah, do it that, remember, we had an LBC one pager that had a bunch of stuff dropped here, and one of them, you know, all of that had been pre-ruined, this was just put into the contract, so you can see it physically, very well. Yep, yep. Um, and so this requires, um, a, a notice.
Yeah, what, so you, we're assuming there's about five positions?
Yeah, it's gonna actually, we, we think it's actually gonna be less than four, because we believe we have a reservation.
And then, what, what are we doing with them? Are they a part of a different union?
No, they're independent contractors, yeah, they were independent contractors, and they went under the federal law, where they have a right to come together as a, say, to be the union. So the next part would become, are they an individual, one, you know, a union by themselves, or do they do what the Paris did, and move in under the NTA, so that they're all under the umbrella of the union?
What is, what, uh, what districts?
All over the place. Uh, a lot of districts do not have CODAs and SOPAs. Most of them don't, I can tell, don't even have them. They have only been full-time, um, occupational therapists a whole time, this is like a show.
And the OTs and the speech leaders, like their supervisors, are they part of this? Or are they, so they're in already?
Correct, yeah. The 182, they have a potential to do summer school and all that stuff, at the cost, um, they, um, there'll be years, to be quite honest, I think there'll be years that we could use one more, and I think there'll be years where we're saying we can't use this person, we need actually the OT. We have, our caseload is a lot, we have, because remember that the only, the only negative of their job by law is that they have to supervise, right? That's the, that's the, and their supervisor, the two different regulations, not desert regulations, you're saying, all of the licenses are supervised.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the revisions to the Norton Teachers Association contract? There a second? Hold up a favor, all right?
Thank you all very much. Madam Chair, next up is, um, a contract provision. Remember, we had this with the custodians, um, and so we've come from an agreement, this is a, this is based on the districts, um, deciding the coverage that needed. Remember that the cost is to be offset by those that are utilizing our field, so this is mostly our third-party folks that come in, and we're just gonna say, hey, if we need, if we have to have, you know, for example, security beyond police right now, we have a couple, we've already had a couple situations where we basically have to put a resource off because of the traffic. So that's, so what you have here is just an indentment to that with a, uh, one, one change, and that is the rate of capable security, because we want them to go through some training, they have more responsibilities, they have some potential. Otherwise, you're paying their regular rate, so if they're, if it's a Saturday, it's time to have, it's not a double time, it's a holiday, so those are all clear, go to the, uh, to those that are in fact, um, utilizing. And then the job description for, um, the security is noted on the back, and it just requires a vote and chairs, signature, that's all the more.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
In this instance, there's an excessive amount of, you know, debris left behind, and it takes, like, so say, an event, it's a three, and our guys are cleaning it to six.
We will charge them for the six, you know, absolutely, that's what we would do with any other organization that has us, including those organizations that we try to be really good to, as well, but there's a situation where the event is over at three, that doesn't mean that the cleaning's over at three, as they can, so we would be sending them a bill for three more hours, four more hours, two more hours. We build them, uh, wait, I'm gonna put you on the spot, we're already getting 1,500, uh, 1,500 checks coming. 1.35 an hour, 1.95 an hour, whatever. And then you have a custodial cost. We charge the fee, five and a half, three, twelve, the seven, the three thousand, that was on, kind of, a holiday.
Anything else? All right, do we have a motion to, uh, approve the custodial memorandum by understanding? Is there a second? Hold up a favor?
Thank you all.
I'll sign that after you.
Yes, I do leave you with all contracts signed, and you don't have to go back. I am going to, um, just provide the school committee, and then turn it over to Dr. O'Neill. This evening, um, we will be requesting the appointment of this assistant superintendent teaching, regarding, I think, uh, the re-upon contract. I have signed those contracts, and today will be the candidate, hopefully through you, be able to do the same, it was an awesome process, let's turn it over to Dr. O'Neill.
So while I do this, I'm actually going to invite Dr. Ackerman to come on up, he can either sit closer, or stand at the podium, whatever he smells comfortable with, um, and ... Thank you for your patience. It's important for him to, nobody's getting himself into it, so. He didn't, he didn't run away, so, um, thank you very much to the committee, um, as I mentioned the other evening, we had a really exceptional search process led by Mrs. Karen Witzber and Mr. Marty Cersei. Um, we had 52 applicants, um, from this position, we interviewed 12, um, and the committee board being three very highly qualified candidates, qualified candidates, and Dr. Brian Ackerman rose to the top of that search, um, and I have asked him to be our interview assistant superintendent. Um, Dr. Ackerman is currently the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning in, um, Dudley, Charleston, they always get confused, which one goes first?
D, or C?
No, they were, she was like, that would be the opposite, um, and so, um, we had a great visit, he was here last Tuesday, got to visit the schools, to talk with teachers and students, get to be with our team, um, and, and for us, is, you know, we're entering, um, like I'm entering a new role, Christine is in her, you know, probably into her second year as our business administrator, the fact that, um, Dr. Ackerman had experience as assistant superintendent, very success, successful, assistant superintendent, I can't speak anymore, tired, um, and, you know, we're really excited for him to hit the ground running, and I think he's gonna be a really great assistant teacher for our team, so.
Right, okay, I've been rolling in all.
Thank you all, I just have to say, I just enjoyed the interview process and the site visit process tremendously, meeting the administrative team, meeting the teachers, meeting the principals, just having a chance to tour the schools, schools just gave me a great picture of what Norton is all about, and, um, I'm very thankful for this opportunity, and I really look forward to meeting, uh, the team, working with you, working with the community, because as I saw very clearly tonight, you play a very passion, and I want to match that passion, I'm gonna match that energy, and hopefully for outcomes for students, so, thank you.
If you have any questions, Dr. Ackerman wants to carry on. Hello, Tom.
I guess it's terrible because I'm supposed to.
Welcome. Thank you for, like, accepting your patience tonight. It's been a long meeting, but, you know, if you're, Vinnie and Jen, say you're our next guy, I'm looking forward to working with you and just keep the things that we really have and keep them, so welcome.
I think it's important to note, just so the community is aware, we had a, we had multiple parents, we had multiple admin, we had a school committee member on it. We had a student on it, we had principals, a principal. So it was a very, you know, I think it was a total of thirteen of us, thirteen plus Vinnie and Karen as well. So teachers were involved, obviously, as well. So I think it was important that, you know, committee that was put together and, you know, making the three recommendations was, you know, kind of touched all factors involved too. I think that was a super important highlight. And if you made it through the almost two-hour meeting, I think you're good to go.
They're not only two hours.
No, not even those.
You walked in and saw those people, you're like, man, there. Incredible.
Okay, anybody have anything else? All right, so we have a motion to appoint assistant superintendent for teaching and learning.
Fifteen years I've been doing this. I actually know that we have hired assistant superintendents.
Yeah, I know.
Right, I actually hooked up with all of them. I said, wait, that's not right. I'm focused.
So this is, this is, this is superintendent?
You appointed Megan.
And school nurses.
You're like a little seminary system. So that makes sense.
Fifteen years. Second.
Now, all right, so now we take the vote. All right, all, all those in favor?
I vote them.
Yes.
What are you gonna vote?
I'll tell you what. You vote, no, now it's going. So do you take your vote?
Yeah, so all those in favor?
All right. Thank you. Please sign. Please sign.
And I think that's it for the agenda. We just have other. And I just have to say, I was just sitting here in this meeting and it just hit me just like a minute ago. This is our last meeting together, Joe.
Yes.
So.
He's dancing, trying to get him aside.
I know. So I, I just want to say, Joe, um. Thank you, from the bottom of my heart, for what you've done for our students, for what you've done for my own children. Don't make fun of me, you all.
No, we're not.
Hey, I didn't say anything, Sherry. Seriously, you have led this, this district to do unbelievable things and I am forever grateful. But not only have we worked together, you have become a dear friend. And I treasure that more than anything. You always used to call me boss. I was never your boss. You're always my friend. I am going to miss you greatly. I know that Jen is going to do an amazing job every time because she has learned by yourself for a long time. So thank you for everything. You will be missed greatly. And I love you. Oh, I'm gonna stop over there.
You know, this is one of the hardest decisions I've made. Some of you know because I've reached out. I know you're in great hands. I know the reputation of Dr. Ackerman is very, that he's gonna take us to get to another level as a team. I know the work Christine has brought. I know the dynamics of such a office, the Wade Lazzards, the Karen Winsbours, the Minnie Cerseys, the Casey Lucys. These people bust their chops every day, complain hardly ever. And when they do, I just don't listen. They are a wonderful group of people. They do like their teachers, they do like their parents, they do like their custodians, they do like the kids, and they like each other. So you have, we have things to do. It's never perfect. I think you guys know that. And I know that Jen and the team will continue. I've been a teacher all my life and the hardest thing for me is walking the walk between the people that I love that do the work in the classroom and leaving on a low, giving somebody a pink slip. Making crappy decisions is never easy. And I do take it personally. It's not just a business for me. So I make a ton of mistakes because I do take it personally because I do care. Norton is a wonderful community. I chose to send my only child here. She's gonna graduate from here. There's no doubt that she's coming for next year because she loves being here. She's made life long friends here. So our family has been part of your community for, for, since, since my daughter, well, since I got here. And my wife is a twenty-year employee of the district. The dynamics, the differences that we have between management and labor happen every part of the game. We've made plenty of decisions on the side that have not been in the best interest of long-term. There's no doubt about it. You've heard about something in the town. But I do think about one thing, and it's the thing that I always tell people is the most, most important thing in a district like Norton. And it's not like this everywhere, the people. If you can respect each other like we do, regardless if we have disagreements, like, like you said by the almost former president of the union, it's about working as a team. Norton does it differently. Those of us who've been on the outside know it's done differently here. There's only a couple of us that come from the outside in terms of having to deal with management and labor and the issues that take place. This is a team that wants to work with the school committee, they want to work with the administration. A lot of decisions get made that unfortunately either help or hurt. But at the end of the day, I really feel comfortable knowing that come July first, she's gonna take you to a whole other level. She's gonna create things for you, be able to make those good decisions like you've had to make when you've made it through the years. And lastly, most importantly, I consider some of you less because we've just gotten to meet each other, but considering you're folks friends. And I'm always available to you. I still have my cell number. If I can be of any alternate way, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. And you'll see me through every so often because I've got my, well, no, she's gonna get a license by then. So maybe this. She wants me to get in. Yeah, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Norton. All of it, good days, bad days, struggles, most importantly, I think, a lot of major successes.
We love you, Dr. Ryan.
Thank you.
Norton is gonna miss your presence and we will still keep in touch, Jen. This is a photo that I took of you, October fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Look at this.
Let's be you. We didn't wear glasses. I got no facial there.
Two thousand seventeen.
Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. Yeah, Peter, I am going to miss you. There is no doubt about it. Absolutely. You make me smile every day.
That's right. And I will continue to make Jen O'Neil and the task book me smile with my happiness because we need more people. Peter, we need, we need a picture.
Uh, no, I actually do have one last thing. And I know we talked about briefly, but the Kent Taylor track ceremony was absolutely unbelievable. I'm not a crier, but it did feel a little dusty in there, you know, for sure.
I was sitting next to him. It was definitely dusty.
Yeah, I kept my sunglasses on. No, Kent is, he was obviously my first or my last English teacher in Norton. It was his first year here. But no, he was a great guy and the two students we talked about him. I mean, just absolutely phenomenal in terms of, you know, their public speaking ability, the way they grabbed the audience's attention was, it was outstanding. You know, a great ceremony, you know, it's quite a, quite a thing, I think, about, you know, talking about Norton. And, you know, what Joe has done so well here is really, you know, building that community. You know, you saw it with alumni coming back and, you know, former student athletes and parents and, you know, that all starts, you know, with a, with a great guy. But, you know, it starts with the support within the community itself. So I think it was a real touching way to honor Mr. Taylor and obviously on Joe's last school committee meeting, I think it kind of all ties it very together.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And please join us tomorrow for veterans at four o'clock. Weather's a little questionable. We're gonna try to put some tents out there to at least be able to see the signs and then we'll go inside for cake and goodies and then to, I mean, and then to all.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Good meeting, guys.